deletions to the agenda, and I have a few here. Number eight, executive session for the Economic Development Fund, request for those funds. It will be done in open session instead of executive session. And to add an executive session for a discussion on the union grievance. I would entertain a motion for those changes and additions.
So moved.
Second.
Lee's the most and Heather's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So we'll move on to approve our minutes from our September 6th, 2023 board meeting.
Make a motion, accept the minutes from the September 6th, 2023 Select Board Meeting.
Second.
Lee's the motion, Ariana's the second. Any changes, deletions, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes?
I have none. I'm good, thank you.
Everybody good? Thanks for the great job again, Sue. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. No citizens' comments, we'll move right on to old business. And Julie, can you take us through our old business list soon as you're done then?
Yes. For those of you who were at the first meeting of Julie and Cory's, was on September 11th. A site visit has been scheduled for September 25th at 4:30. Anybody wanting to attend the site visit needs to be at the high school. The bus will leave there at 4:30 that will bring to the sites. Then the follow-up hearings have been scheduled for October 11th and October 23rd, both at 6:00 PM. Thompson Road, as I had said to you the last meeting, the engineering firm is going to be holding their required public hearing for the environmental assessment. That's going to be September 28th. There will be an open house from 5 to 6, and then the formal hearing will be 6:30 to 8. So Sapper will be recording the meeting, and Susan will be managing Zoom. I will not be here, but this is a meeting that will be run by the engineering firm, but any Select Board members that want to attend would certainly be, they would welcome.
And that will be here?
That'll be here at town hall.
Okay, thank you.
Solar Field, I still have had a chance to reach out to the contact, but I'm hoping to do that this week. Electric on the Green, so I have learned that the Electric on the Green project is something that may be eligible under the Downtown Transportation Grant because it is in our village center, and there is thoughts rattling in my brain around some bigger projects for the green that we've kind of always touched on and off for several years. So we're not going to do that electric this fall, we're going to hold off. The grants open up late fall and are usually awarded January-ish, so we're going to hold off because it may be a chance to get that project funded instead of having to use economic development funds to pay for that. So we're going to hold off for now, and then municipal planning grant has opened up due November 1st. I have talked to state and to ACCD, who manages this grant, about the potential of using the funds to develop or to do a feasibility study on two or three parcels in town that are town-owned that could potentially be used for a housing development. They are very supportive, they think it would be a very competitive grant. I have reached out to a firm that we have used in the past, SE Group, just to talk through with them what a project might look like and get some numbers and those types of things to start the conversation. So I will be back to you with that. Obviously, before we submit, it's a good discussion for the first meeting of the Housing Commission. You know, this is a good topic for them to kind of take on that we'll discuss at their first meeting, so I'll be in touch with more on that. And then the only other add is that the lead service line inventory has been completed. Jeff has reviewed it, that'll be coming to you in a final format. Only six projects from that for us, which is great. That's it for me.
Anyone on the board have anything on old business?
Julie, sorry, I was just going to ask about the wayfinding. Where do we stand with that?
So the bid has been awarded to WS Signs, and they will be, we actually have our kickoff meeting October 5th with the architect and the designer. They will design or not, it's designed, they will construct over the winter with installation early spring.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
That's one of those projects that's been going on a while, and it made me think of the sidewalk project.
Well, if anybody's got connections with the rail, there you go.
It's still?
Yes, the rail is still holding us up.
Wow. How many years has that been going on?
Five. Five.
I won't bring it up for a while.
I'm not bitter, but it's been five.
It's just too bad that it has to work, the procedure has to work like that, and it's held up by one entity, which is, we're having a lot of trouble with the railroad crossing, where the sidewalk goes across, a railroad crossing in front of Smithy's, and then entails all the way from Depot Street, Maple Street, all the way down to the town hall here, and the bottleneck has been the railroad.
Which who agreed to it at the time of application, but when it came time to sign the easement, won't sign it.
Anything else on old business? Hearing done, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Whiting Library.
I'm going to cheat and pull this to me.
Okay, so before we start, I'm going to disclose, my wife Donna Hutkins is secretary on the board.
Thank you, Peter. So we have quite a few folks here from the Whiting Library, the...
We do, and first, we're not asking for money. I know that might, will hopefully put a lot of people at ease, at least not at this point. What we've run across is an issue with personnel retention due to lack of benefits. One of the driving factors for our previous director to leave was the fact that she was offered a position with commensurate pay and benefits. And also during her time this summer, she contracted COVID, and it was during that time she realized she had no short-term or long-term disability availability, insurance availability to cover, she ended up getting long COVID. So those factors, along with some others, have kind of put us in a place where we, as an entity, don't want to have a revolving door of personnel who come in to get the experience of saying, "I've led a library," and then when a better offer with benefits comes along, goes out the door. I'm not saying that's what happened in this case, but we can definitely see where it could happen. So what we would like to do is start a conversation with the Board of Trustees in perhaps a committee made up of Select Board members and trustees to come to a reasonable accommodation that works for both the library and the town, to get the two full-time employees there, the benefits that most others take for granted at jobs they work.
Just for information, Matt Gorski?
Yes, sorry, Matt Gorski.
Board directors.
Chair of the Whiting Board of Trustees.
I should have brought it up right when you started speaking. We've have had this conversation before because of the relationship between the library and the town, and it's been discussed as far as who's in control of who, how the employees work, how they don't work, what benefits they have and don't have. I know that this board has fully supported the library in the past as much as they can and saw fit at the time, but it's a discussion that I think is important at this time to bring up and try to resolve it and try to figure something out that works. I don't, we have like 26 town employees or something?
We had 26 full-time.
Full-time town employees, which have an excellent benefit package, and I think that the library being a big part of this town with the two full-time employees would warrant also the same type of benefits and package that our regular employees have in this town. It's just figuring out the details between the relationship because with the town employees, they're under the jurisdiction of our town manager and the Select Board indirectly. With the library, they're under the direction of the Board of Trustees, and there's, I guess there would have to be some kind of memorandum of understanding on how that would work as far as the relationship and who is, would be in charge of who and how the benefits work and what benefits are important and what benefits are, that makes sense to have. And I think the idea that you have about having a group, a couple of people from the Select Board and the Board of Trustees to hash out a lot of these details and a lot of these, a lot of this information would be a good idea. That being said, it's up to the board to make a decision like that on which direction we want to go, and do you want to keep the relationship the way it is? Would we like to improve it? Do we want to do something different about the employees? It's a board decision to start, to even start this process, never mind to change it in the long run with a legal document of like a memorandum of understanding. I know our contribution, back when I started on this board, was, I don't know, 40,000 or 50,000 a year, and it's gone up over the years, probably not even keeping up with the cost of living and inflation, and I believe last year we were up at around 80,000 or 90,000, I think.
We were over 100.
97,000. So it's a money thing, and it's a support thing, a money thing, and it's a discussion I think that is important to have, especially when it comes to trying to retain employees that are going to stay with us in the long term. And the library is a lot of times the first thing that people in a small town, when they move here, that have children are in contact with, and it's always good to hear the stories of the positive effects that the library has on new people that come into town. So I think it's an important asset, but I also think it's, it almost ties into economic development also, the fact that we have a library that's functional and good at what they do. So I'm open for a discussion from the board on how we, how do we pursue this, your thoughts on our ideas on what we should do or not do, or how do we go forward?
I have a couple of questions real quick.
Go ahead.
That's okay, thanks. In reading some of the materials that were provided to us in the packet, it's clear that the relationship that the Town of Chester has with the Whiting Library is not textbook, or at least it doesn't appear to be. So the relationship of the board of the library versus the Select Board is also part of what we're discussing. So as opposed to looking at the agenda and thinking, oh, this is an HR question, can we improve the compensation package to retain a library, librarian, compensation question? I think what you're putting on the table is an organizational question, who works for whom and how, and who has oversight over whom and why, and what the extent of that is. If what we're discussing as a Select Board is, do we want to dive into an exploratory process of what is the organizational structure of the Whiting Library in relationship to the town, then that sounds like a working group, and that sounds like something, somebody's got to do some serious research and find out all the other towns, how do they do it, how did we used to do it, how would we benefit, all that stuff would be great. If we're only talking about a compensation issue, it's a very different conversation. So my question for us is, are we talking, are we wanting to discuss how the library operates, or are we wanting to discuss a compensation package for two employees that could be town employees or could not?
And those are excellent questions, and that relationship on how the employees work with the town or don't work with the town is a big question. So it seems like it's almost a combination of the two, besides the monetary part of it, the exact relationship. In the information that was given to us from the attorney and stuff, every town has their own relationship with their library and stuff. It seems like it's relatively clear that the Board of Directors, the Library Board of Directors are directly responsible for their employees, but here they, but here we are asking the town to take them on, on the benefits end and stuff.
Right.
So it seems like a combination of the two, and Lee, you were going to?
Yeah, so my question related to the library, how are the trustee, how many trustees are there, and how are they appointed or selected?
They're elected.
So they are elected?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many are there?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, so it's a direct, the authority then given to the trustees comes from the town voters. So similar to us sitting behind these tables, we're elected to this position. So I agree with Ariana, this really seems to be an organizational question rather than a compensation-type question. How do those two elected groups interact with each other and are held accountable by the same people? It seems to me that there's some difficulty there in the objectives of the library trustees versus the Select Board to a degree. I don't know, I'm still trying to think this through, how those two groups work together and who's responsible for whom. So if the trustees are responsible for hiring, firing, whatever, their employees, but the town all of a sudden takes on the responsibility for some benefits, does that mean all the pay, some of the pay, you know, how does that work? And I guess to go with what Ariana said, it's kind of a discussion that has to be had to figure that out.
Because by extension, the question becomes, do the salaries of the library employees go in the town payroll budget, or do they go in the library budget? And the library budget gets allocated, I believe, and then voted upon as part of the whole budget by us. So if the employees become employees of the town, do the funds that pay for those employees become part of the town infrastructure? And so it's, there are a lot of dominos, unfortunately, because it should be as straightforward as, should we pay appropriately to keep a librarian in town? Yes. It's not that easy, so.
And that's why we brought this before, the Select Board, is because we've recognized how complicated the issue is, so we feel it needs to be worked out between the two elected boards.
Well, I have a, I have a question before you go that far. Can you, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, right? Can you join as a separate entity? Because then you would be able to get into the same package without us crossing boundaries. And then there would not be the organizational problem of shoving back and forth, the law, we paid the lawyers already because we have the document here. But if you were able to get into that on your own, then you would be able to do the benefit package.
Our benefits aren't through the LCT, Peter.
Who are they through?
Our, they're private. So our health insurance, we use Richards Group. The only thing that runs through the LCT is our unemployment insurance and our property and liability insurance.
And our health insurance, and our health insurance sometimes changes yearly depending on the quotes that we get from different providers, that I've seen it change more often than not. So I would think that whatever our relationship is with the library, that those employees would fall under our employee packages and stuff to keep it simpler for everybody involved as opposed to a separate entity. And I would also think that no matter what the relationship is with the library and the employees and the benefits, I do not want this board to be a part of their board telling them what to do or not to do or make any decisions, nor I think is that allowed, and that is pretty clear in the statements from the attorneys that that's not what's happening. It's the Board of Directors that have direct control over it, and as you said, it's the voters that have direct control over it. If they're not happy with something that's going on, it's up to them to vote them out or put in some new folks and stuff. So I don't want to be in the position of starting to micromanage the library or have anything to do with their day-to-day workings or what happens. I'd strictly look at it through the point of view of just benefits and bringing them under the umbrella of the town, to have the same benefits that our highway department does, that our police chief, I mean, all these folks that we provide those benefits for, and that we provided an excellent package for years, and there's been pushback against that package for a long time to have employees contribute towards it and stuff. I would just, in my personal, in my opinion, is just go towards the paying part of it and the benefit package part of it and not be involved in the governance of the library in any way, but.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that at all. The question that comes to my mind is, the voters put both boards in place, and the voters have their responsibility for holding us accountable, but we're holding the purse strings, I guess, for the benefits, and where does that line, where is the line, is there a bright line between the responsibility of the trustees of the libraries to pay versus what we're doing, or is that kind of a, it's all going back and forth, and we don't know? And I guess that's a question, I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, but what's the expected cost or anticipated cost of providing these benefits to two employees?
I cannot answer that.
We could answer that fairly easily, because...
I can do that, if the board wants to go in that direction, I can do that.
Yeah. This has been going on years and years, and I want to just say that one of the positives, and I think I'm just saying it in a different way than you are, Arnie, it's really lovely that the library is separated from the Select Board and that the library is its own identity and functions like that. I think that we've been talking about this for years and years and years, and a committee to see how we could draft a document whose responsibility is whose. I want to protect the library, but, you know, to look at who would be respons, to make sure that it's clear who's hiring, who's managing, and who's paying for benefits if that's what we choose to do, or do we choose to increase the amount of a budget and pass it to the library to manage? And I don't know if that would take on more costs than just absorbing them, but I think that there's a lot of things that we could do to just study the problem. The construct of how the library got the Board of Trustees and separated from the town has been muddied, but yet pretty clear, isn't it?
It's 1800s general language to establish.
Yeah, so there's a long history, but that separateness is really good, I think, for, there have been times that this board is not supportive of the library, and so, in my view, historically. And so it's really nice that there's an independent board that's voted in by the voters who controls the library. So I think a working committee to see if we could resolve this issue, since it's been going on forever, isn't a bad idea at all. That's my opinion.
I would think that this committee could just, well, be two Select Board members and meet with the Board of Trustees. If we added a third, I mean, your meetings are warned anyways, and they're open to the public, so they're going to...
Yep, every second Tuesday of the month.
But I would think two board members would be appropriate to start this discussion with the Board of Directors and to bring up all these issues that we've been talking The opinion from the attorney that we've gotten in the past, and Julie put us, put it back in the packet, it does explain a lot, but not the part when it comes to the employees and benefits and pay and those items and stuff. But as far as the control goes and how that all works, that is in there, and that's been the case since, like you were saying, what, 1888, I believe it was, when the Whiting Library was established.
Well, and I think we're going to need an attorney to really help us map out what the, the understanding, yeah, thank you, is, because there are a lot of details with that, and so, and I'm more than happy to be on that if there aren't two other people who really want to do it.
There's one volunteer, another one?
I can volunteer. Do the, do the library meetings include a Zoom component?
They do.
Okay, yes.
Great.
My, just for, my travel schedule is somewhat extensive, and I'm cleared on the first and third weeks to be here for this, so that's my only challenge, but yes, I would be very happy to participate.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of topics and a lot of issues that are in this, in this memorandum of understanding, but the big one, and a lot of times what it comes down to is going to be the finances, is the money.
Well, and maybe Julie, for the next meeting, you could itemize how much healthcare these things are currently.
And do you want it for your working group committee meeting? I mean, that sounds like you guys would get together, do your working group.
Well, and the Select Board's going to want to know how much things are too.
Well, yeah, there's going to be information that's going to be requested as you go along, and as topics come up, I would think, and then we'll just get the answers to them, and...
But Heather, are you saying you would like that for the next Select Board meeting?
I thought Lee might like it. We can share it with everyone.
Yeah.
Transparency.
I think depending on when this joint meeting gets kicked off, I'd like to see whatever gets presented or provided to them.
I mean, we could share all the information that the, the two groups together with the Select Board and make sure that all the Board of Trustees get the same information through all.
And one of us can report back, too. We'll keep you updated and in the loop.
I think that'd be a great approach, and that's a, that's a good idea you had, Matt, regarding getting together to iron out a lot of these details, because in the end, it's going to be a legal document, I imagine, that's going to have to be made by an attorney to make sure everything's the way it should be, and it's part of the system at that point.
Right, and I know since I've become a trustee, the work between the Select Board and the trustees have, I think, made leaps and bounds towards the positive, and I certainly am not looking to damage that in any way. So we were looking for a solution that would move us forward without damaging the better working relationship we've had.
I agree. Any other comments, any more discussion, anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Just, you're going to have to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and...
Hi, I'm Alita Bliss. I'm a resident of Andover. I was born and raised in Andover. The Whiting Library is my childhood library, and I'm back, living here. I can attest that the library, through my childhood, and then and now, as a returning to this place and intending to perhaps make my life in this community, the library is a hub. It's connective, it's, it's the backbone of the community, and I think it's vital that we support the employees of the library to the same decree that they are supporting this community.
Thank you very much.
I entrust you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something if I could. My name is Janice Bradley, and I live here in Chester. I moved here in 2016, and the first thing my husband and I did after we left the attorney's office to sign our closing papers was get our library cards. And I've lived in many places, and this has always been one of the first things I've done. So I've been here through a whole cycle of library directors, and I am longing for the library to have the stability... the library to have the stability that comes with good, solid work benefits. I mean, that's something probably none of you have to worry about. I don't have to worry about it as a retired state employee, but I think it's very important. I have two little grandchildren. I bring them to the library frequently for story hour and just hanging out because they really love it there. And I've met a lot of other young parents while I've had my grandkids there who all have come to the library and all have said, this is one of the first places we've gone, and how much it means to them. So I'm just a big promoter and fan of the library, and I'm hoping that this good work you're all discussing will have some, bear some really good fruit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
Hi, I'm Carrie Roy King, and I'm a resident of Chester, as well as the youth librarian in the Whiting Library, which I am so grateful for. I love this job. Thank you. And I recognize that we are a municipal library from 1888. That's how I understand it when I read the papers, that the library opened in 1888 and gave its, the town at the time agreed to make it a municipal library and then keep it open for its community from then forward. And as a public service, I look at my position really as that because of recognizing that I don't receive health insurance benefits for my job. I receive an hourly wage and a vacation, paid time off. But if I didn't have health insurance because of my partner, my husband, I would not be able to continue working there. And it breaks my heart because, you know, to be that precarious in a work situation for my livelihood feels really uncomfortable to me. When I look at parity, when I look at equity across the board in our community, when we're looking at the other municipal employees who worked for Chester and their benefits, I am paid by the Town of Chester. My tax dollars are taken from my paycheck by the Town of Chester. So I feel I'm a municipal employee, and I'm proud to be that. And I really want to continue that and honor that legacy of all the librarians who worked there before me. And for all those who want to come after us, it would be a really great thing, and I do honor you for stepping up to recognize this is time to make a change for our community. Because as a municipal library and a municipal employee, I don't understand how I'm different from the recreation department's employees, except that my boss is bossed, the director by the Board of Trustees at the library. If Julie Hans were our boss, if we could report direct to Julie, we would be a municipal employee. But that's not the structure as it was established in 1888. So here we are in 2023, and I really thank you for putting this on your table and moving forward in a positive and important direction for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. There's a gentleman with his hand up on Zoom. I can't see the name from here, but...
Susan Goodfellow.
Susan?
I struck back. Yeah, I guess I, I guess I shouldn't talk it back. Yes, Susan Goodfellow. Thanks so much for this opportunity to speak, and thanks so much for your management of this issue. I must say, it was really surprising to me as a volunteer at the library to discover that the, the folks that work there don't have health, healthcare benefits or sickly benefits, especially, it's especially underscored now during the time of COVID, and it looks like the viruses are not going to be fading away. So we have employees who are dealing directly with the public. There's, you know, a stream of folks coming in and out, and lots of little kids having, having a good time exploring the world of books and, and other experiences with, with Carrie. So thank you so much for creating this, this committee, and I do hope that you'll come to a, a quick resolution of this issue that, that serves, that is fair for the employees and for all of us in Chester who, who are very fortunate to have such a wonderful library available to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Arnie, can I just say something?
Sure.
I just want to be clear. So the library employees, while they do not have the town's benefit package, there was a lot of work done by previous boards, by previous select boards and previous library trustee boards that have given the librarians, they have a stipend that pays towards a health insurance benefit that they can then go on the open exchange and get. So while it is not the town's, it was a bridge that we tried to work on with previous trustees and previous select boards to get them to that point. So I just, for clarity purposes, there, it's not that they have no benefit. There is a stipend paid to send them on the open market, because unless I can check the box that says they work for me and are a town employee, they can't be on our health plan. That's just the rules of health insurance. So that was a bridge that previous trustees worked with the town to establish. So I just want that out there.
So Julie, is that, is that stipend, the Town of Chester pays that, or the...
That's part of the contribution that you pay to the library every year.
It's in our budget.
It's in the budget. That's part of that, ninety-seven or a hundred thousand.
And it's been two, three years?
It's been a few years that we've done that. Yeah, it is not equal. I mean, I will say, it's not equal to the, to the town employees. But it was a way to start ratcheting it up to get them to a point where they are equivalent. So I just, for, for previous board, or for new board members who do not know the history, I just want that out there.
And thank you for the clarification, Julie.
Yes, there has been a lot of work done over the past five or six years on this.
It's...
And, and I might even extend that further, Julie. Like, for, for nine years since I've been on the board, we have been trying to support the library, but this is a difficult legal situation, and it's a unique relationship between a library and a town. So, you know, I'm all for getting clarity of how we can maybe handle this, but it's not as if the board has ignored it for, for sure, nine years.
No, absolutely. And it...
This board, I should say.
To me, it, whenever I can, I always bring this up. We wouldn't even be having this discussion if this country saw fit to provide healthcare for all its citizens wherever they went, whatever job they were on, whatever was happening. It just, it comes up all the time in all different factions of our work and everybody else's work. And for some country just can't figure it out.
Can I have five minutes to voice my pet peeves? I mean, I understand you do this every time we have this discussion.
Yeah.
And I understand the point you're trying to make.
Yeah.
I think that while we may disagree on what we deserve, I mean, I've been hearing a lot of people saying, we need to have health insurance. I don't have health insurance. I'm self-employed. I have none of the benefits that we're talking about. So how does that benefit me? Not that I want to deprive people of this, but I think the expectation is, we deserve this, we have to have this. Who's going to pay for it? And that's where I keep coming back to, where's the money going to come from to provide these benefits? Do I think we should do this? Yes. But I got to figure out where, how we're going to fund it. And that's when I'm responsible to the taxpayer, you folks as voters and taxpayers, to make sure that the money that we collect is spent in a way that is responsible and meets the needs of the town without driving people out of town. And we have similar problems when we're dealing with housing, when we're dealing with all kinds of things. So maybe I'm out here on my own, I don't know. But the point is that I think we need to be realistic about what we expect and what we can afford and come to some consensus on how we deal with this particular issue. And it's not like I don't want to provide health benefits to any of the library employees, but I need to figure out where the money's going to come from. And it's coming out of my wallet, it's coming out of your wallet, it's coming out of all your wallets. So let's be reasonable and think how we can do this in a way that makes not everybody happy, nobody's going to be happy, but at least makes sense for our community.
Thank you, Lee.
Just, just to have a little, I have quite a bit of knowledge of going through benefit packages and things like this. A good benefit package is going to be forty-eight percent of what the salary is. So that includes the FICA and everything else. So there is no way that we're not talking about a big number here, and we need to be realistic about that. I mean, we can be, the biggest complaint that I've heard from everybody in the town was the big tax hike that we gave them last year. And it's going to be an uncomfortable place to go and say, suddenly the payroll, I mean, you have ninety thousand dollars in here now, so just you start whacking another thirty thousand on top of that, that's a pretty hefty jump.
Yeah, the finances will be a big topic on it, for sure. And part of it, I think, also is, how do we value our employees? The ones that mow the grass in the cemetery and the ones that plow the snow and the ones that work in the library? I mean, these are philosophical discussions, and I think they're important. And, and part of that is, and it always is, it's money. It comes down to it. And my point is that I wish it wasn't town money. I really wish it was just a standardized federal system that worked. Somehow they do it everywhere else, but we can't manage it here.
The money's got to come from somewhere.
Oh, I know it does. And I know where it's all going, too, because there's plenty of money.
When we start, we were on a creative bent there, that we have a committee that we're going to represent the select board, we're going to sit down with the library, and we're going to brainstorm, and we're going to come up with some kind of way that maybe we can provide certain things. But also, maybe it doesn't happen, I'm, I'm not going to jump into what my thoughts are about it, but if we always run to how much things are going to cost, we're never going to be creative. You know, and I hear it costs too much, that takes all the wind out of the sails. So from my perspective, I hope that the team can come up with some options that would solve this problem once and for all, and maybe at different levels of funding. Like, I don't know a hundred percent, but I think if we say we can't afford something and we don't even think of creative solutions, you know, we cut off the creativity. So I'm, I'm positive that with this committee, that there are a lot of great minds that we can think about it, we have great legal support, and come up with a solution for the next, you know, thirty years or something. That's my...
Anybody else, any other further discussion? So I guess we'll have two select board members, along with the, the Board of Trustees in the library. And Julie, will you help coordinate that?
I will.
Even though they're not our employees yet.
I think I work very well with the library, so yes, I think I can continue to do that.
And, and the relationship has been getting better over the years.
I've heard no complaints.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming, the Board of Directors of the library and all the folks here that did make comments on this. It's appreciated to hear what the public has to say on a topic when it comes up before us. Thank you very much. You could all stick around if you want for the rest of the meeting, or if you like.
I'm already here.
Thank you for the invitation. Thank you very much.
Give me a couple of minutes to head out.
I'm already here. Saves me from watching it on YouTube later.
There you go.
It's a continuation of a discussion that we started at our last meeting, where we passed a six-month moratorium on any new unhosed short-term rentals that haven't already been advertising and aren't in existence. So basically, for six months, we said no more new unhosed short-term rentals.
Okay, so I am going to disclose that, yes, I am a part owner of a short-term rental. And I don't think I should recuse myself because I know most of the pain of it as well as the good. So I'm here, I'm disclosing that there is both benefit and pain.
Thank you, Peter.
I don't think we're voting on anything, are we?
No, not at this point.
We're just having a discussion, so, okay.
No. I did get a, an update from Preston in an email about an hour before the meeting. It's, and I'll just read it out. I'm not sure if everybody got it, but it said, it was twenty-one registrations were received, three are renting but less than fourteen days per year, three no longer renting, twenty-seven total responses, fifty percent of the fifty-four who were sent letters. Of the twenty-one registrations received, nine are hosted and twelve are unhosted, forty-three percent hosted, fifty-seven percent unhosted. And that first letter was mailed August 25th, and the second letter will be mailed on October 4th. In your package, you probably have your short-term rental ordinance that came in there.
That was emailed out today.
Emailed out. And then there's other information from Preston over the last couple of months that talked about the location, and it's a general synopsis of what was being going on with Granicus Group. We know we've been having trouble with them, and it's been putting everything behind, which was part of the reasoning for the moratorium. And the suggestion at the last meeting is to make sure we make good use of this six months to come up with whatever we choose to come up with. Going through the list of items that were possibilities, a lot of them entailed the planning commission also. So what I think, whatever comes out of this discussion that we have here today, I think it would probably be helpful to have a joint meeting with the planning commission also to maybe discuss items that might be related to their end of it, whether it's zoning amendments or zoning changes. We're allowed to make the ordinances and do that part of it, but if there's anything that's related to the planning commission and our zoning regulations, it would, it would go through the planning commission. And Hugh Quinn is the chairman of the planning commission is here today. And I was just bringing that up because it's another one of those topics that I think if we had more people involved that have an interest in this and have a say in it, I think it would help as opposed to us doing it in a vacuum and passing it back and forth if the planning commission becomes involved in any parts of it also. The big question is, how do we want to pursue? How do we want to go and what do we want to do as far as our board goes?
I'd like to speak for a second, if you don't mind, Mr. Goodfellow.
No, go ahead.
Upon reflection over the last two weeks and rereading the ordinance that was put in place in October of last year, and I, for the record, joined the select board in March of the following year, so I was not part of this ordinance. However, in reading it, it feels like it covers many of the components of things we were discussing over the past few weeks. I am curious. I feel this ordinance is pretty comprehensive and pretty good, and that the work that needs to be done in this period is to put this in place, enact it, figure out how we're going to maintain and follow through on the things that are in the ordinance, and set ourselves up to robustly work within this ordinance. So I would want to say one other thing for the record specifically. I don't know what my opinion is at this time about more or less regulation than already exists in this ordinance. So I want to state clearly to my fellow select board members as well as the public, I don't have a preconceived conclusion of where I think this should go. So I am hoping all of us are going to be putting ideas, thoughts on the table that may be good, may be bad, but that we're all willing to consider different things. There is not a specific question put to us, from what I can tell. At this point, we have an ordinance, we were hindered, crippled, by a outside source that did not do what they said they would do. So if we were to... So if we were to hypothetically ask ourselves, if this ordinance was signed one month ago, how are we doing? What do we need to do next? How can we stand behind this ordinance strongly and firmly and move forward? So that's a lot of opinions, no actual questions, but I want to put on the table, this document is pretty good and worth living with for a while, to see if we already did the right thing. What's missing is the reporting we were requesting from someone else, and our appetite to enforce it. And that also speaks to the planning and the zoning teams. So I'll turn it over to Lee from there.
Thank you. Preston, I got a couple of questions for you regarding this update that you sent out. It looks like we had 54 identified short-term rentals, is that correct? Or is there more than that?
Well, we sent out 54 letters. I have a hunch it might be closer to 60, but we will get another report from Granicus at the end of the month and pursue that a little more vigorously, but yes.
So it's not 80 or more than 80? It's less than what we were thinking of beginning with?
Right. The original 80, we kind of, as we went into it, we found that places like in Victoria and Fullerton and others are also, for obvious reasons, advertising on short-term, or on the host platforms, and they're already approved for what they do. In fact, they're approved at a higher standard, so it isn't as high as the first counts.
Okay. So we sent out letters to 54, we got 27 in responses, and of that 27, there are three that are renting but less than 14 days a year, so they fall out of the ordinance, and then there's three that are no longer renting that had been. So now we're down to 21 registrations. And of those, well, I guess, yeah, the 27, there are 57% unhosed, 43. So we've got almost an even split between hosted and unhosed. Is that a surprise, or is that what you were expecting?
That is a surprise. I was expecting the hosted to be more like 20%, not 43%. We'll see how, as we tease out the remaining half of the registrations, if that changes. But right now, I think that's good news, but it does seem that there are a fair number of Chester residents that are just using short-term rentals as a way to supplement their livelihood, which we support.
Okay. And then, as part of the ordinance, we have fees and penalties, et cetera, for those who are not complying with the ordinance, i.e. specifically the registration aspect. So can you remind me of what the deadline was for registration when you sent the letters out?
Basically, the first letter said you're supposed to register in 30 days. The second letter will be a little firmer, but I think our feeling is that that would... that we would basically give them another 30 days, and then that's when we would start to get a little more firm about enforcement.
Thank you, Preston.
I realize that there's a lot of information that we're still don't have, and things are changing, and maybe it's not as much as we thought it was going to be. But my question really isn't on how many there are, it is more to the point of the regulation. Because there aren't that many, is that why we're thinking, maybe we shouldn't have any regulations, or just stop with this document and leave it at that? And just let them be able to open up a short-term rental wherever they chose? I mean, that is another option. I mean, that's another thing that we could do or not do. We could just take this document and just keep that, and that's the only thing we're going to do. When I still think about it, especially unhosed ones, it's a business. And when we hold our inns and our, basically, our inns and our hotels to that higher standard for safety, for regulation, and all that, why do we not with a short-term rental, which is basically the same thing? Yeah, go ahead.
This ordinance includes... I mean, it takes us a step towards moving them...
Yep.
In rereading this, it feels like this ordinance respects the fact that that is a business. And you have to fulfill requirements for the fire and safety, and the... I can't remember all the phrases, but the false alarm calls and all the other things that a general resident who doesn't have a short-term rental in their home doesn't have to do that. So these people who are running a business by having an unhosed STR do have to do more things than I do, just as a homeowner. So there is a step there that is different. It's not just anybody in a home can open an STR, because we've established that they're supposed to do additional, take additional steps.
That's true. Yeah, I see that. It just, part of it, for me, is that they could do it wherever they want.
When you say wherever they want, do you mean because it could be in a tiny home, or it could be in a giant home? Or do you mean because it could be on Main Street, or it could be out on Matson?
Yeah. I think because of where it would be, the locations makes a big difference on what type of business you would allow in a neighborhood, if it wasn't a short-term rental, if it was, you know, a car dealership or a car repair place. I don't understand why this one gets a freebie to be in any district all over town, where that's not usually the case with hotels and...
Well, let me extrapolate. So what I hear you saying is, an unhosed rental, the zoning board probably wouldn't approve a brand-new Holiday Inn in a certain part of town. So why would they allow an unhosed rental? Is that the correlation you're drawing?
Yeah.
That's the correlation?
I mean, it's something to look at. Now, whether it's decided to do anything about that, or whatever, it's just one of those aspects of this whole topic that concerns me.
Well, one of the original discussions was that we were going to do this for data, and it doesn't sound like we're going to have clean data for the first of November, if I had the dates up right. 30 days from the first letter, 30 days from the next letter. You know, so 60 days from when the letters were sent out, you just start charging the offenses, because that's what you really have to do, is you have to wake the people up. We have six months. We really could wait till after the first of the year and we're done with budgets, have solid data, have a housing committee that also we could get feedback from, and then really have information to make a really good discussion, because you'll know what's going on in the town. Right now, we're kind of hypothetically throwing darts out. And I want to see the information. I pay... I do not make money with this. I'm on a house that I'm kind of saddled with. But I'm trying, you know? I totally support this, and I understand the con... You know, I understand that people don't want things next to you. I did send out a kind of proposal for, if it was zoning, how it couldn't be abutted. You know, so if you had in a neighborhood, it couldn't be abutting to another one, so to keep them spaced out. You know, I totally understand, and actually, and want to take kind of more of a technical look at it than just say, you know, you have to have DRB approval. You shouldn't be able to have six in a row. So it's... There's more to it than just sitting down there and saying 30 days, or 60 days, if it's rented for 180 days, you shouldn't do it. You know, you're allowed in certain districts. I don't think that works, because I think you want to have spacing. So the thing is, there's a great deal of more technical data, and I think you have to let this collect data. And then you have to bring the hammer down. It's $125 a day. And Granicus said, in the meeting that we had, that although they couldn't do the online form, they said they could do enforcement. Now, if they can do enforcement, then it starts paying right there.
One thing real quick, within our working period that we've allowed ourselves, whoever it was who pointed us to the Vermont STR Alliance, thank you. I spent some time on that website. It lists by town the current status of ordinance or regulation, and this is anecdotal, so it's not factual, but I would say there's probably 25 towns listed, and probably 18 of those say, "Ordinance currently under consideration at planning, ordinance currently under consideration at select board, developing regulation, developing regulation." So our fellow towns around the state are also exploring this. I'm not saying sit on our hands and wait. I'm saying this next six months could generate a lot of really good information, not just from Chester, but by also talking to our peers in the other towns. This does seem to be the time where everybody's looking at this, and let's figure out how we go from here. The other... What I meant to say, one of the things I said in my initial comments, which goes back to this, is if we use this time to determine what we have, we gather the data, and then we're clear about enforcement. So we are taking this time to figure ourselves out. We establish a date, and on that date, these penalties begin accruing, and whether that's the first of the month, or the end of our six-month pause, or whatever point. But then we need to learn, as a town, how to do enforcement. So if I posit that part of this also has to be preparing to come out of the pause, ready to actually enforce the ordinance.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that one of the things that we're tasked to do as a board is to ensure that our citizens are happy. We're not going to make everybody happy, but on the other hand, it's not our job to try to make some people happy while we make other people furious. Our job is to get out of the way and let people do what they want to do with respect to their neighbors. And so when it comes to hosted versus unhosed, I'm all for hosted short-term rentals. I think that's a great way for people to be able to stay in their homes and afford their homes in an economy that's terrible. The unhosed short-term rentals, I have a little bit of a problem with, because you have people who are reaping the benefits of a small town like Chester, and not leaving a whole bunch of money here. They pay taxes, so theoretically, they should have a right to do what they want with their property. But on the other hand, I think that not having a presence and not having a relationship with neighbors makes it very difficult for people to establish that working relationship with their neighbors, so that they have... Well, number one, they know who their neighbors are. Number two, they're able to talk to their neighbors, instead of calling the police or whatever. So I think that, notwithstanding your thoughts about, you know, dealing with the unhosed short-term rentals right now, I think giving another 60 days, or even 30 days, for us to collect a little bit more data, see if we can get the rest of the responses from the 54 letters we sent out, and then look at it again. You know, I'm not suggesting maybe the next meeting, but in a month. You know, we have this discussion all over again with more data, and then we can understand, is it really 43, 57, or is it, you know, 20 to 80, as Preston was anticipating? And I don't think, none of us has a crystal ball. I don't think we're able to do that. So my recommendation is that we continue this conversation, waiting for a little bit more data to come in, and then think about how we're going to protect our citizens, and enable them to enjoy the life that they are living here, to the extent possible, without over-regulating.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, as far as the differences go, between the short-term rental, unhosed and hosted. The fact that if it's a hosted one, if the person lives next door, or it's in their house, or whatever, is a whole different scenario. Someone who is a part of the community, part of what's going on here, as opposed to an unhosed one, which is, in my definition, it still is basically a business. And I realize more data will help, but I don't see how that's going to change much on my personal opinion, whether it's 50, whether it's 25, or 15, or whatever it is. It's affecting people in town, and I think there's ways to mitigate that problem and still have short-term rentals allowed and stuff. I'm not saying banning them forever, or what that, but unhosed short-term rentals, I think, should have... Be held to a higher standard in a lot of ways. The location, whether it's allowed or not allowed, because of what's happening into neighborhoods where they have been.
Well, that reminds me of another question, and that was one, somebody brought up at our last meeting about calls for wild parties that are going on. Did anybody get a number? Do we have an understanding of how often that happens? Okay. I'm just wondering if we can reach out to the police and ask them, how many calls have we had in the last year for unhosed short-term rentals? To see what the problem actually is? Because as Arianna pointed out, anecdote is not data.
True.
But it might help us to know a little bit if it's a huge problem that we're dealing with, or just, you know, am I in it? And if it's all concentrated in one area, then that might give us a little bit more information as well.
And the ordinance does deal with some of that stuff already, which is helpful.
Right, yeah.
That there is something in there, where there has to be a contact person, and there has to be someone to call and be able to talk to regarding any issues, so the neighbor doesn't have to be the one that takes the step and puts themselves out there, you know, as the complainant. So...
Julie, do we have an update? Are you current on what the lawsuits? I know there's some lawsuits. Are they in Vermont? Are they throughout the country?
I know Burlington's in the middle of one.
Okay.
One or two. I'm not... I thought Morristown was, but I may be wrong on that. Preston, do you know of any others?
The talk I've heard is that both Burlington and New York City are in lawsuits, because they basically came out and said, "We're only going to allow hosted rentals, we're not going to allow unhosed rentals." I haven't heard any more than that.
Okay. But we should keep an eye on that.
Oh, absolutely.
I like, going back to the list that I don't have, I think there's a lot of things that we could do with the unhosed, like you can't have it unhosed unless you own the property a certain amount of time. You know, there's some things that we could do to discourage unhosed, but also the registration, to have someone who you can call if there's a police complaint, is really important to me. And the other thing that I was thinking of, and I haven't reviewed the ordinance recently, but I think we should have something in there about the health officer, having an inspection, you know, making sure it's... If that's legal, or if we can do that. So that's just another thing that I am thinking about.
Yeah, there was...
There were some good things on that.
Eight different suggestions.
Yeah.
Basic registration, owner limit, day limit, residency requirement, unit limit, zoning limit, STR waiting period, fees and taxes, and financial incentives. It was quite a list.
Well, and I think if we worked with some of those, we may get to the same effect of having fewer. And the other thing that I haven't heard yet, and it's the data, what number... I think it was 8% people were throwing around, and then it was 4%. But I don't even know what a healthy number is. A healthy number, zero? Or, you know, do we want some second homeowners to rent out to people, to bring people to town? I'm not saying that we want to sell homes to industry to rent them, but if a large portion of our housing stock are second homeowners, is there some advantages, if controlled well, to the town for renting those out? Because it is the trend, and maybe the trend is dying down. I mean, just anecdotally, some of my kids aren't staying in short-term rentals anymore, because they've had such bad experiences. So, you know, we want to look at this, but I think legally, to say absolutely no, you know, have a moratorium forever, and no, you can't do it, I'm worried about the liability to the town for that. But I do think we could accomplish some of that with the list that Preston provided.
Yeah. And I don't think it was the direction of the board to totally ban them at all.
No.
Ever.
I'm not saying it was, but I've heard that, and that, I'm just saying, that approach would concern me.
It was, on my end, it was more that I just want the neighbors and the people to be involved in anything that might happen in their neighborhood when it comes to something like that, but... like that, but...
Well, and I don't know how you go about it with the zoning, like, you know, certain areas in town, you can only have X amount, you know, versus every other one, a budding property ones. That's interesting. I haven't heard about that. But do we want limits on, you know, neighborhoods and the number of houses per neighborhood? Or, I don't know if you can do that. But a neighborhood that has 60% or 80% short-term rentals is not gonna be the same neighborhood as they have 10, 15%, right?
So, the consensus of the board would be, I would think, that we're gonna take a little breather on this for a month or so to gather more data. I was thinking that we would have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, but I don't know if that's really necessary at this time.
Well, as opposed to a full pause, I think there is, there's work to be done, as in looking at these other towns that are close, that are similar in scope and scale to Chester, and seeing what they're doing, paying attention to what's happening in the state level, so not just in other towns, but what's happening with the stuff in Burlington, and then continuing to have conversations.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to meeting, a joint meeting.
I think the thing, the thing right now, the Planning Board is kinda on a roll, and they're gonna almost, they're gonna get through the zoning for the town this year. And I think it's been so long since we've gotten through the whole zoning one time that when their agenda opens up and they're through a time that they're either waiting for us for a public meeting or something like that, not to, do not interrupt their cycle, which is going really well right now. They will have a pause probably toward the end of the year, is my guess, and that would be a better time. And also, we're gonna get tied up in budget here pretty quick.
I think we usually can handle more than one topic on our end, too, whether it's budget, or the library, or the short-term rentals and stuff. And as far as what they're, the Planning Commission can or can't do, I would think they would be the ones to make decisions like that.
Now, Hugh, you wanna get up and speak to that?
Sure. So, Hugh Quinn, yes, the Planning Commission is pretty busy right now with getting the bylaws updated, but because of the way that work flows, oftentimes, when a body of work is getting ready to go to public hearing, we can have some downtime where we can pick up other topics. So, what I will say is, we're not so busy that if it was important to have a joint meeting on short-term rentals, we could certainly fit it in. My suggestion would be, if you wanted to have that kind of meeting, the way that it would be most productive would be to just have a working session to go through that list of various options that had been put together, along with what other towns in Vermont are doing, and just, you know, aside from the fact that you have all that information in your packets, and you've been able to read it, there's never really been any discussion about the merit of this one versus that one, the level of effort to implement and enforce. So, you know, for the sake of just better educating everybody about the options, we'll help you as a board decide whether some you're just gonna stay away from, some maybe are more interesting, and you might want to think about them a little more. So, if that's something that the Select Board wants to do in a joint meeting, we're happy to, to work with you guys to schedule that.
Thank you, Hugh. Would the board be interested in a meeting like that, just to go over that list, and like Hugh was saying, a working meeting? Closer?
You're talking...
That's because of these...
Turn your ears down.
That's true. I do talk softer when I hear better, but yeah, okay. I'm getting closer. All right, so, what's the consensus of the board? They think it's a good idea, not a good idea?
I think better data.
Hmm?
I mean, if Preston thinks 60 days, we're gonna have good data, then have a meeting because you're gonna have information you can work with. I don't want to push it out 60 days, though. I think we need to meet, at least have a discussion about this in 30 days. And maybe that's where we meet with the Planning Commission to go over the options that they've already provided as, for us to consider. And then certainly, if Preston gets more data in that 30-day period, he can provide it to us, and if not, then 60 days, then we have something else to discuss. But I, you know, six months isn't a lot of time, and so if we're just putting it off 60 days, that's two months right there, and we've already wasted half of our time. So, I, my recommendation would be, in 30 days, if you guys, as a Planning Commission, are available, we have that working meeting to discuss these options.
I'm with Lee. 30 days.
And then if Preston has additional data that comes in before 60 days, or within that 30-day timeframe, we can discuss that, too. Because I agree, I think having a lot of discussions and trying to make decisions without the data doesn't make a lot of sense. But on the other hand, I also don't think we have a bunch of times that we can not be discussing this.
Even with no data, if we gather in 30 days, we can review these recommendations, and it's entirely possible that the productivity is, we as a board say, "We're never gonna do number four, we're never gonna do number two, and we're never gonna do number six."
And we love four and five.
At least then, we've reduced what we're talking about once we get the data.
That makes the options a little clearer.
I think there's value in meeting in 30 days.
Kathy?
Kathy Hasbrook, I just want to remind you that the issue that brought this all up were people on North Street, and there's a, if you, there's about 1,700 kitchens in Chester, and we figure that's about the best way we can tell how many dwellings there are. I mean, and if, say we have 70 short-term rentals, that's about 2% of the whole, but on North Street, it's closer to 50, and that's what is driving the worry and unhappiness of the citizens. And I think if we can solve that problem, then the rest of it will fall into place.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, and I do remember the numbers that were talked about with North Street and the Stone Village as far as the amount, but there are other neighborhoods that were having the other issues that were happening with short-term rentals, too. So, I mean, it, it's an issue that comes before us, and we have to make decisions on what we do, if we do anything, or not do anything. And I think the idea that Lee had made sense, at least we can go through that list, maybe have some more data, and talk with the Planning Commission, and get a little more educated on those options that we have, and like Arianna was saying, some might be just no starters right off, which will narrow things down to give us a little bit more, a place to go to if we, if we choose to, and a better understanding of those options and what they mean, if we choose to use them. We might end up just staying with our ordinance the way it is. I think that the discussion was, what, walk, crawl, fall, I don't know, something like that. But...
Stagger, I think.
Stagger.
Do you want me to report a meeting between the Planning Commission and the Select Board for about 30 days out?
Yeah. I would think so.
I agree.
I think that'd be great.
Anybody else have any other comments, any more discussion on this? All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here regarding it. Thank you, Preston. Hugh?
Welcome.
Next item is new business, future agenda items.
You are gonna do the executive, development funds in public?
Yes. Technically, it's after new business because I had it in executive session.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But it's still on.
It's coming on.
Coming up. There you go.
You have traffic ordinance, I think?
Your next meeting will have traffic ordinance changes, oversized loads, as well as dealing with some of the parking fines. We have some corrections to do there. I think we will have the false alarm policy finalized, I'm pretty sure. And then on the 15th, you'll do your quarterly financials, which starts to tell the picture of where we're at, and I'm hoping to have the first drafted budget, very, very high service level at that point, but the first drafted budget will be there. And then that is the meeting where I think I can have something to approve, the planning grant application, I'm hoping, at that meeting. Because that has to be, you have to sign off on that application, that one specific requires, requires that.
Great.
I do have new business. I do have two items. Do you want to know them?
Yeah, please.
So, the, we are going to be doing a panel for the hiring of the new lieutenant. The panel will be myself and Tom, and then two members of the Citizen Advisory Committee, and we were hoping to have a Select Board member on there, if there is interest, to be on that panel.
I could do it.
Do I do it?
Yep.
Thank you. Is anybody fighting Peter for that?
Come on, listen, I got a buy on the library, right?
I was gonna say, you gotta trade me the library.
What, I can't do the library?
Go for it, Peter.
I would, I would love to be on that committee, but I have no time. My wife would shoot me.
And then, there has been a very generous offer for a donation. We have a resident of Chester who, in memory of his wife and his brother, is wanting to donate a very nice, attractive carport that would be built at the emergency services building, so the cruisers could park undercover and not have to be idling the whole time. They could just be undercover. It wouldn't be a garage. What he would like to do, he met with Tom, he met with Tom a couple months ago about the idea, and then we said, "Yeah, okay, we'll see if he comes back." Well, he did. He came back today. He's very serious about it. It would be over on the PD side, where they park the cruisers, there would be just an open wooden structure that would be designed to blend with the building. He is having some drawings done so that you can see what it would look like. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, that we have a longtime citizen of Chester who is wanting to make this donation, like I said, in memory of his wife and his brother.
Very generous offering.
Yeah. So, when we get a drawing, I'll get it to you guys, you can see what it would look like. That's all I have for the business. And yes, Heather's gonna ask me about a donation policy.
Yeah, I am.
It went downstream with the flood.
What, the flood 10 years ago? Not this recent flood.
Exactly.
I think it was the one 10 years ago. Nah, we, we could do that.
Anybody else have anything that they would like for future agenda items?
The donation policy.
Okay.
It's a long, policies are way down the list. Okay, get him surfaced.
Do we even have one?
It's kinda like Arnie and healthcare.
We do, we do, actually, under the financial policy. But our policies are getting to the point of where they're just very out, they're getting very outdated. They work, and we're meeting all criteria that is required, but they, there are certain policies that should be looked at every year, or at least every other. And, I mean, you know, your entertainment policy, you haven't looked at since 1989. So, you know, if, we had, I had a mission of getting these looked at, and I just...
Reality comes in.
I'm already working 70 hours a week dealing with the flood. I just don't have any more capacity for policies at the moment, so.
Well, and by the way, I understand why they've...
I know.
Right?
I know you do. It's my new, it's ongoing.
But my policy, revealing the policy, is kinda like Arnie's healthcare thing.
I know.
Like, every so often, nine years, "Hey, how about, how about those policies?"
Yes. You're never gonna make it.
That's my affliction, I'm sorry. No other new business, future agenda items? No? Now, the next item, it's gonna be an open session, and it's a request for use of our economic development, economic development fund. It's a request for the Masonic Temple in the amount of $50,000. Julie, can you help us out with this one?
Sure. So, Evan Chadwick is here. You may want to, it's up to you, Evan, if you want to come up and speak.
Oh.
So, this is a new owner bought the Masonic, Masonic Temple a little bit ago. He has some plans to renovate the building, office space, and some apartment spaces. He applied for the funds. As per our policy, it is required to go to Spenceville Regional Development Corp. for review and recommendations. So, in your packet, you, Bob's, in the packet, you have Bob's recommendation for you, and it certainly talks about the parameters of what Mr. Chadwick was looking for.
Is there anything with this request or recommendation that's out of the ordinary for the development fund, or is this kind of in line with our philosophy of lending money?
It's in line with our philosophy of lending money. I mean, there's a few things that are different, one being that we would stay interest.
For two years.
For two years. That, that's not, that's, it's not unusual for economic development funds. We have never done that, but that, like, you know, Bob is not raising concerns with that, and he, he would have raised concerns if he has concerns with that. There's a lot of, in our current economic times, there's a lot of different ways of loaning money and creative things that the towns are doing to get their revolving money out there. There is a proposal for a couple of apartments here, which we all know that Chester needs. So, it's just, it's dependent on how flexible the board wants to be.
Yeah, and the term on it also, isn't it?
Certainly, it's a project that Bob and I both support.
It's the term also. It's a 10-year term, as opposed, usually, we have a five-year limit on, I think, on the terms or something.
But Bob was not concerned about the financial stability of the rentals.
Mr. Chadwick, can you just give us like a, an overview of what's happening there and what's going on?
Yeah, absolutely. So, right now, we closed on the temple two weeks ago. Right now, what we're doing is we're working on the downstairs, which was the dining area. We've opened up the ceilings. We're starting to work on, the first goal is to put the office, which is a law office, which will be a branch of my law office, Chadwick and Spenceley, we have three offices throughout Vermont now, Brattleboro, Pittsford, and Randolph, so we'd like to add Chester as our fourth. And so, that's gonna be our first goal, is to get a, an attorney and an assistant, at least two employees. The goal is, hopefully, if business is good, to have three full-time employees stationed at the lodge. After that, we will focus on the upstairs apartment, which if any of you guys have been into the Masonic Lodge, is this gorgeous, high-ceiling, beautiful ceiling space. We're going to keep a lot of the character we have been working to try to preserve historically, going and applying for tax credits through the state. Have also been working with the state of Vermont through their housing assistance program for some grant money to make these apartments available to lower-income individuals, and, and working with them. So, after the office, we will then work on the upstairs, and then our last will be to put a, a two-bedroom downstairs along, next to the office, or behind the office in the kitchen area. So, upstairs will be a three-bedroom, downstairs a two-bedroom, and then the office, which we expect to be two rooms, the beautiful front room with the nice windows, and then a back with a handicap-accessible bathroom. So, right now, we've been doing some demolition. We have engaged an architect to draw up plans, working with fire and safety. We've already gotten the permit through zoning to do this work, and so, we're, we're full steam ahead, and the goal is to have the office open by the beginning, hopefully January of 2024, and then have the project hopefully completed, and have tenants in there by the end of 2024.
So, I, I remember that there was an issue with parking in the beginning with the zoning. Has that all been resolved and taken care of?
So, yeah, there was a, a good discussion about that ad, ad zoning. We intend to, one, we do have space for two spots on our lot in the back, but we also are working with the other downtown merchants to contribute to the community parking behind the building. The discussion was also, that would be one vehicle per residential unit, and that if there were any guests or additional tenants, that they would use the town parking down the street. So, that plan, I believe, was accepted by the zoning board, and so that's what we intend to do, is limit the parking to one resident, one car. The office would be one car, but we would also have access to the front for customers, just like everyone else would in, in the downtown district.
Have you ever done projects like this in other towns?
Yeah. So, we've done it in all of our offices. So, we've renovated older houses in Pitts, in Pittsford, and Randolph, and in Brattleboro. So, this will be our fourth, where we've taken and converted. So this will be our fourth, where we've taken and converted it into a mixed commercial use. So, yeah, this isn't our first rodeo. The, the major issue here, and why I am asking for a little bit of special consideration here through the town, is that the Masonic Lodge, as beautiful as it is, it's very dated. The construction, the electric, is a major concern. We're going to need to invest a significant amount of money in getting it up to code. Some other issues as far as the windows, the siding, as you, as you all know, the paint is chipping away, so we're going to have to repaint that and deal with potentially lead paint issues, which is costly. We do have the financial backing, we do have cash reserves that, I do have a bid from a local contractor that says that the cost is going to be upwards of $190,000. So, we're hoping to work with you guys to provide a stable tax base for a building that was, I believe, tax-exempt for, for many, many years, and has been, for the most part, vacant. It was, I will say, I did come this last weekend and really got to see the, the festival in its full bloom, sitting out there on the front porch, and it really was encouraging to really see the, the energy and the vigor that this town has. I grew up in Windsor County in Rochester. This is a family-run operation. My wife and my brother-in-law are on the, on the Zoom right there. My sister-in-law also is there with my brother-in-law. So this is a family operation. We, we live in Vermont, we've grown up in Vermont. I work in Brattleboro, I coach basketball at Bellas Falls. We're, we're committed to this community, we love Vermont, we're not going anywhere. So this is just an additional, I think, thing that we can both benefit from.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Thank you. It's exciting, I think, for that building to be used and taken care of, so I'm happy about that.
A historical old building like that, to bring it back to its prior, its older glory and stuff, I mean, basically, you're going to be keeping the building pretty much as much as you can architecturally, the way it is.
Yeah, we're, we're focusing on efficiency measures, too. A lot of heat pumps, we're working on that, so we're going to try to be limiting our, our dependence on the, on the boiler system, which is, again, another concern there. The infrastructure is very old in that building, so we're really focusing on, on efficiency, and we're willing to invest the money upfront to get that so our, not only us, but our tenants are comfortable and provided for, and that we're providing, you know, I hear a, a lot of heated debate about the, the, you know, the, the temporary rentals, and that is certainly a big concern, not just in Chester, it is in Brattleboro. You can't find an apartment in Brattleboro for under $2,000, anything that's reasonable. And so, it's an issue everywhere, and we have really focused on providing affordable rentals. We bought and remodeled the place in Bellas Falls, the rent is $900 for a three-bedroom. And we're proud to do that kind of stuff and provide people, the tenants we have there are ex-military with families, don't make a lot of money, but they, you know, they're, they're great tenants, and you forge those relationships by being reasonable with these people, not trying to take advantage. And that's what our goal is here. We're not here to take advantage, we're here for a mutually beneficial relationship, and to hopefully bring some, some, some new people into town.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, any other questions? It's exciting. It sounds like it's going to be a fantastic project and a great addition for the center of the town and the green when it's, when it's repurposing to something that's going to make sense that's happening. That's great. Very appreciative of that. So this has all been vetted with Bob Flint?
Yes.
You've gone through all that part. Where do we stand in line as a town as far as, if everything goes south? Usually, we're like third or fourth in line for, you know, recouping our money if something happens.
I can answer that. So we have a loan through eight or two credit union for 80% of the purchase price, so for full transparency, $225,000 mortgage. The property was just recently assessed as is at $315,000, so there is some equity in there already. There is no other loans, so you guys would be second at this point with, 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 I would say, substantial capital there, should we go south.
Which we hope you don't.
You too.
This is going to be, this is going to be a long-term relationship. I, I like the fact that you've done this other towns with positive outlooks and positive results with the towns that you've worked with and stuff, and that, that means a lot, and what you said means a lot, too. Thank you.
So, do we, do you need a motion to...
So you need a motion to approve, and then if you approve, then you and I'll be, I'll get you the note and the securing documents that we...
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the redevelopment of the former Masonic Temple and the loan for $50,000 to...
Redd Holdings, R E D D Holdings LLC.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
So Heather's the motion, and Lee is the second. Any further discussion on this?
I just add my note of thanks as well.
All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks again, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with all of you. We'll see you around town.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with the document.
Thank you, Julie.
That's going to go.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn. No?
No, we have to go into executive session.
No, not... I didn't see it here, so...
Executive session for...
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, to go into executive session for the discussion of a union grievance.
So moved.
Second.
Third. Heather's...